Again, put on by Cape Cod Five. They do a great job. And I wish I had had that when I was in high school. So, thank you to them for doing that. And last, the DECA Home Show. They put on another successful home show. I don't know which part of that is better, that these vendors who come in to support the DECA program and put on such a great event, or the visitors who come in to support the vendors. It's just, it's just great for everyone. And the kids, they just get compliments. Year after year, it gets better. And the kids do such a great job running that event themselves. So, thank you to them for that.
That is good news.
It is.
Indeed.
Didn't, didn't anybody tell Mrs. Bakayaki that there's a limit to the number of things that she can take?
I had a list.
Oh, not at all. Not at all. Would anyone else like to speak? I'd like to add.
Wow.
I'd like to add that this weekend, I had the pleasure and the honor of presenting with the Warehams Global Education Team with Dr. Shaver Hood and Maureen Manning at an international conference, ASCD, in Boston. And there were over 130 countries represented there. Dr. Bill Jill Biden and Colin Powell were two of the keynote speakers. It's a very, very impressive meeting to have been there, conference. And I'd like to say, for our presentation, we had nearly capacity in the room. We had such great feedback. People were really impressed about what we were doing and how we managed to do it so resourcefully and creatively. So, kudos to, to the school for this program. Okay. Our next item, let's see, a motion. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of February 28th if they're looking order?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, zero. And next, we're hearing a report from the Student Advisory Committee? Oh, there.
Hello.
Hi. Yeah. Well, I'm Jasmine Black, and I'm a sophomore at the high school.
Oh, do you want me to say my name?
Yeah.
I'm Lizzy Ruiz. I'm a senior. I'm about to graduate. Have to reiterate that.
So, a few things going on at the high school right now. Spring sports just started last week. And the National Honor Society induction is next Monday. MCAS we've had for the sophomores this past two days, and the last day is tomorrow. And also, we were planning on doing the school walkout a few weeks ago, but then the snow came and we couldn't do it. And we talked to our, all the classes about the things that we were planning to do with like getting monitors in the cafeteria. And we did get a lot of feedback from our fellow classmates, which was good.
Yeah, that's what she just said. Yeah. I think those meetings were really helpful. We did a lot of surveys, like at the beginning of the year, kind of. And like, we've been going over them, like slowly trying to make changes, like that we could make, that were like, not necessarily easy, but like easier than some of the other ones. And students seemed to really like respond to what we were talking about and what we had thought were like good changes to make. And they had some feedback of their own, but we took that back with us. So, I think that was really good. Any questions? I feel like that's the most helpful part, is if they have any questions for us.
I do have a question about the, the walkouts. That happened also in Fall River, where we had a snow day that day, but they ended up doing it another day. Have you considered doing that?
Um, I honestly didn't know that other schools were planning on doing it another day. And I did see, like, a lot of schools around our region did that. And I kind of wish we did, but I'm not sure if it's too far since, like, if we wanted to do it again.
And also, the other thing that I've seen, I guess I have to admit, it's been on Facebook, that instead of doing a walkout, what about a walkup? Like, walk up to somebody you wouldn't normally walk up to and give compliments to them?
Oh, is that a question? I, we haven't actually, I haven't heard about that personally, but I, it's a good idea to consider, definitely, because I think in different high schools, like, there is a lot of, like, kind of seclusion to your own groups. I think that at Wareham, we're pretty diverse with who we speak with, though. So, I, I mean, it's something to consider, definitely, though.
Can I just say, we did talk about that at the high school council meeting. We talked about that, but it was only on Facebook. And we tried to find information, and we couldn't find really any other information to pass on to the students. So, but we did see that.
Okay. Maybe it's something you could expand on and create.
Well, can I just point out that, so, in association with that post and that idea on Facebook, there was a news story, I think it was on Good Morning America, and it was about lockers with sticky notes on it.
Oh, is it?
With compliments. And I read that story, and I thought, well, we did that at Wareham High School. That happened. We didn't do it, you did it. You did it there.
Key, Key Club does it every year.
Right. So, here it is making the national news. It's something that we do. Exactly.
They have a whole day where they go, like, I think it's like they go at like seven o'clock at night or something, like when everybody's gone. And they go around the school for like an hour and put posting notes everywhere and like signs and stuff like that. And then everybody comes to school the next day and find a random posting note on their locker, and it's really cool.
Right. So, you should be com- I mean, like I said, it made the national news, and it's something that we've already been doing.
If you had walked out, would you have considered it an act of civil disobedience?
Always with the hard questions. I guess it can be considered that way because of, like, yes, we are supposed to be in school at certain times, like, that's the law, like, the rules. If we walk out, like, it is civil disobedience. But at the same time, we also have the right to freedom of speech. And I feel like standing up for what happened is something that, like, schools, since they're everywhere, they're deciding it, it's something that we did feel, not necessarily like strongly, but we did feel like we should be in support of that movement, because what's happening isn't acceptable. And whether we would be committing civil disobedience or not, I think that it would be worth it because of what it stands for and what it's meant for doing.
So, if you had marched after school, you could have made the same statement, but it wouldn't have been civil disobedience, correct?
I suppose that is correct in saying, but technically, the whole point of the walkout was to do it during school hours, to show the effect that guns and that violence has on schools during school hours. Because people don't come and shoot up schools when everybody's already gone. They come during the day during school. And so, the whole point of it is to show support for that issue.
So, you're, you're talking to someone who remembers civil disobedience well during the Vietnam War period, which for you is ancient history. For me, it was at one time a current event. And at that time, there were consequences associated with civil disobedience. And I assume if you had walked out, you wouldn't have expected Mr. Palladino to have had consequences associated with your action.
I think the fact that they had this pre-planned, and we were going to adjust the schedule to use our advisory time, so it really wasn't civil disobedience. It was more of, this is what we want to do, how can we do it and make sure that it's not a huge distraction to the educational process. So, they, they went about it the right way, and unfortunately, the snow day and MCAS kind of changed the course of this plan. But we still have, you know, we have an award that we created and some things that, they had a great agenda. So, we'll revisit this when the time is right. And, but they had an awesome plan, and unfortunately, Mother Nature didn't cooperate.
Finally, did you consider this a political statement as well?
I definitely think so, because when we did talk to, like, the different classes about it, we told them that only do it if you truly believe in what you're standing for. And don't just use it as a time to get out of class. And if you actually support getting gun control enacted, then what's the point of being out?
It's an interesting moment in time. Thank you.
I have a question. If you look back on this past year, because the year's over for me, could you tell me, if there's, what, what are you most proud of? What, what accomplishment?
Of the group?
Of the group.
Yep. For me, I think probably getting the outdoor classroom in motion. I know that, like, being in certain classes, like, there, there aren't any windows in some classes in the school because they're like internal classes. And so, it makes it like really difficult to like, get, like, not necessarily fresh air, but like, there's no sunlight, like, there's just fluorescent lights. And I think that the outdoor classroom gives students and teachers, like, a unique way of teaching and learning. And that'll definitely help, like, the classroom environment, especially if teachers do have the option to take their classes outside.
Sounds great to me. Thank you. Anyone else? To grill them? No, thank you very much. I've enjoyed listening to you for the past three years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rodriguez. Come on down.
I just want to thank Ed and his secretary, Sandy Baboza, for the job they do for this presentation. But Ed's a part-time worker, and I, quite frankly, I don't think there's been a day this year that he hasn't been in the office, even in between seasons. And they, they both do a wonderful job, but obviously, Ed's in charge of the athletic program. And I appreciate the work he's putting, putting forth for the students and the town.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Really do. It does help that I have a very good secretary. I really do. Secretaries have a lot to do with making somebody look a little better than what they should, I think. And mine is very good. Couple of highlights I just wanted to go over. Our, our boys' basketball team won the gold division of the conference. And the boys' and girls' basketball team both qualified for the tournament. Hockey team didn't, but made a huge, huge improvement. And I'm anticipating that they will qualify for the tournament next year. But some nice awards that our school won was, the hockey team won the Boston Bruins Award for sportsmanship. They only give that out to a handful of schools. And we were one of the schools that won that award. It was, it was very nice. It's more for how your team conducts itself, and the coaches and the players. And it was a very nice thing to get. And the, the girls' basketball team, again, did a phenomenal job with raising money for the, for their cause. And, and they were recognized by the MIA again as one of the top schools in the Commonwealth for that community service. And, you know, our girls' track team won the sportsmanship award. And we also had two, two, two students that broke school records, Bradley Heronkowitz in the shot put and Taylor Gerbridge in the high jump. So, overall, it was very, very satisfying with the winter. It's, it's getting better, and, and hopefully, we can keep improving.
I liked seeing that there are seventh and eighth graders involved. It seems like their involvement, have those numbers gone up? That's what I wanted to ask you.
It, it's been pretty consistent between 25 and 35 a year since we've had it. And there's no question, they make a difference with our athletic teams as far as being able to have JV team and things of that nature. It really, really has sustained the program. It really has helped.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to ask a question? Comment?
I suspect you've answered this question before, but it just jumps out at me that for both girls' and boys' track, more than 10% of their expenses are something called membership dues. What are we getting for that $1,000?
Well, we have to, in the winter, you can't go outside. So, you have to go inside to do different track meets, and those cost money. So, we have to use, create in the effort, Volk, Reggie Lewis Center, things of that nature. And, and those are the built-in membership costs for those things that we have to pay, and the trainer.
I'm just surprised it's classified as membership dues.
Well...
It's, it essentially sounds like rink time.
It more or less is. It's a, you know, we got to pay, you got to pay people to...
It's to the conference, and it's the facility fee and the, and the trainer fee as well.
Yeah.
Membership dues includes the trainer?
Yeah.
I think we have a classification.
No, not, not our trainer.
Only at New Bedford Volk.
Yes.
That's a conference fee, and we, we allocate that out to all the schools. We pay one-tenth of that fee, so that's part of the fee. That's a larger part of the fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All set.
And, is there a request coming, too? A request?
Yes, yes.
Oh.
Nice job, Ed.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Clear report again, as usual.
This is Ben Catturli, our girls' volleyball coach. And he'd like to say a few words about this upcoming trip. We hopefully have planned for the Labor Day, right before the Labor Day weekend.
So, we've been on this trip for the first time.
Can you give a favor?
Yes.
Can you press the button on there so it's green?
Yeah. So, this would potentially be our second time making this trip down to Disney for the volleyball tournament. We have 12 players that are interested. The tournament would take place between August 28th through September 1st. We'd have two coaches going and two chaperones. And we would have a bunch of fundraisers to raise the 19,000. That would take all the fees for the tournament, the flight expense, and everything to go forward for that.
Last time, they raised 100% of the money, and I anticipate them raising 100% of the money again. Ben does a fabulous job with that. And we had our basketball team go in. Now, our volleyball team, both have gone. And it hasn't cost our students one cent. And I don't anticipate that happening again. I mean, with the fundraisers Ben has planned, and he has great control of the whole situation. So, it's a great thing. They'll miss no school time. And it's actually a preseason tournament with schools from all over the country. And it's been, it was, it's been a great experience for the kids that have gone.
I, I love the fact that you're doing it. But I'm surprised that the MIAA allows this much interaction between coaches and players in the off-season. How does, how do you get past that?
That's not off-season. It's, it's preseason. They, they can't play their first scheduled game till after Labor Day. This is the weekend before, but you could play exhibition games.
So, this is the equivalent of the first two weeks of the year?
Yes. It's going to be taking place during the second half of the second week. And when you'd have also scrimmages anyway with other schools.
Enough said. That explains it. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Move, move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bon voyage.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next, it's the global education. Mr. Marcus, come on down.
Good evening, everyone. This is on.
Good evening.
Joe Marcus, the ELL district instructor, standing in for Colonel Matt Stanton this evening, who could not be here. He's the educator who's organizing the opportunity I'm about to present for our students. I'm here to request your approval for a change of venue for our planned trip for April 2019. Due to an unfortunate lack of interest in visiting Brazil, we're redirecting our efforts to Eastern Europe, because many have expressed interest in visiting that area of the world. During April vacation, we would like to visit five countries, including Italy, Austria, Hungary, Slovakia, and the Czech Republic. Efforts to identify a sister school are already underway and will be incorporated into our travel plans, as has been our past practice. We will be traveling with our partner at Lingo Tours, who's founder and director, has been in the district the last few days, meeting with staff, students, and administrators alike. I've traveled with him in our district's previous tours, and I cannot say enough good things about both him and his company's efforts to create an engaging and world-broadening experience for our students. And we hope to have your support in this venture. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that, go ahead.
So, can you say that again? Is this trip in one week? It's just one week?
It'll be nine days, yes.
Nine days. That's still a lot of places to be visiting.
I think our students are equal to the task. They're prepped ahead of time. They know what to expect.
No, I know. It's just, I, myself, had been planning a trip to Ireland and decided just to stay in one area and get, enjoy that one area instead of trying to go all over the place. But, okay. So, then my next question is, is there a limit to how many students can go?
Uh, as I lost touch to our guide, Mr. Sherston, he said there is not. There's a minimum that has to go. I believe it is 10. But there's no maximum.
Okay. And so, this is then going to be put out there publicly so that every student knows that this is happening and that they're welcome?
Yes. We will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that many parents go, too, in extended groups. Anyone?
What's the ratio of chaperones to students? Is there, is there a required ratio?
A required one? I'm sorry?
Six.
Six? I believe it's apparently one to six. And we have never fallen under that.
Okay, so, or over whatever?
Every six students, or, yes. For every six students, one chaperone is required.
Okay. And, and you've, and you, and you obviously don't have more chaperones than you need, right?
No.
Okay. Is there a minimum number of chaperones that you think is, that is basically required?
It depends on the number of students who are signing up for this trip.
So, if you had six, well, okay, let's say you had 12, or 10. You would have two chaperones?
For technical purposes, yes. But any of the adults who are on this trip, it's understood that they will keep track of the students. And we all tend to band together.
Okay. But the parent, the parents are paying full price, correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I, I believe it was in the superintendent's report that she indicated that the reason for the change of venue was not lack of interest, but safety. So, which is it?
I'm going to say I believe it to be a little bit of both. Again, I'm sitting in for Matt Stanton, who could provide more articulate details.
And I apologize if you're not fully informed.
No, no, that's okay. Safety, I know, is an ongoing concern. And, but as I understand, it was overall, there weren't enough students who were interested. But if both of them are taken into account, without a doubt, safety is the number one priority for both our guide and for obviously our staff.
And I, and I thank you for that. Who was the party that expressed safety concerns? The tour operator or Colonel Stanton?
Um, I believe it was a bit of both, but I'm not entirely sure.
When we started seeing what was going on in Brazil and the lack of interest, we did a little bit more research with the safety concerns and decided at that point it was time to reevaluate and reframe this trip to another location.
Now, to, to the best of your knowledge, and I appreciate your stand-in, so my apologies for that, but was the lack of interest, have, did it have anything to do with the cost associated with the trip? Because these are not cheap trips.
True, but we do have fundraising that's available for students to engage in that.
I know. I understand. But was any of the lack of interest due to the cost?
If I can jump in. That was not expressed to us. Not only do we have fundraising, we also have scholarships for students. But if you recall, this was part of the exchange program that we were going to look at with Dr. Stedman's school in Brazil and do that student exchange. So, this switches a little bit. We, during April vacation, some of the students did not seem as excited to spend time in school as they would sightseeing.
You just brought up the, the issue of scholarships.
Yes.
How, how are the, the recipients of these scholarships determined?
They are determined by committee. Usually, it involves writing an essay explaining why they are deserving of the scholarship and what they intend to do, and how this experience will enhance their global awareness. And we will vote as a committee.
So, a committee of X number of people?
As been prac- past practice, yes.
I want to see if I get, get the, okay. So, every applicant is aware that there are scholarships?
Yes, this is well advertised.
The family makes a determination as to whether they want to apply for them.
Correct.
And then, they, some, some percentage then does apply for them.
That, yes.
Okay. And then, a committee decides who gets it and how much they get?
When they're, as I understand, that these scholarships are set amount-wise in advance, and the committee votes on who should deserve, who is, who should receive them.
So, the amount of the scholarship is always the same? It's just a question of who gets it?
Yes. And this is based on their application, their essay indicating why they would like it, why they're deserving, what they intend to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Is there a set number of scholarships?
Um, there is not. Our local sponsors who provide these are, nothing is set in stone. We will recruit, we will ask, but we do not know off the top of our heads until we go out and we seek these avenues of income to help our students out.
Is it something we could know ahead of time? How many scholarships would be given?
I would be happy to let you know as soon as we are aware. Yes.
Thank you.
So, is, are the scholarships based on need or merit or both?
It's a combination of the two.
I, I must say, I'm sitting here troubled. I, the burden of my trouble should not fall on you. So, just know that that's what I'm feeling. But it, it sounds like a significant benefit and a very, however thoughtful, subjective process. And I'm sitting here concerned, but it's not your problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Oh, we need to vote?
Yeah.
For the trip? Do I have a motion to, uh, accept that the trip?
Change.
The change of the trip?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, discussion.
I would like to know more about the scholarship process personally before I vote yes. Now, I realize I may be outvoted, and that's the privilege of the committee. But I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the process, and I would feel a lot more comfortable approving this trip. And I don't have any problem with the change of venue, and I applaud the fact that safety was a concern. And I share that concern, frankly. But I'm, I'm not yet comfortable with the scholarship process, and I would like the superintendent to come back to us before at least I can vote yes.
Well, I don't, I agree with your concerns, but we're, we're not really voting to approve the trip. We've already voted to approve the trip. We're voting to change the destination.
In my mind, that's approving the trip, because when you change the destination, you change everything, and it requires new approval. So, in my mind, we are approving the trip.
Well, I will go ahead with, I, I see it as a change, too. Just a change, that we've already approved the trip. So, I don't know if we can, we go ahead and vote or have another motion.
You have, you have a motion in a, in a second.
Yeah. Would anyone else like to speak?
I would just like to say that I'd like to Jeff, or whoever, to come back and report what they find about the scholarships.
Certainly. Happy to do that.
Okay.
Well, at this time, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstain? Three, two, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. The next item is the budget presentation.
Good evening, school committee.
Good evening, Michael.
I'm going to give a presentation of the budget, somewhat updated since the public hearing we had a couple of weeks ago. I do have hand, I do have copies of this version if people want it. So, I've tried to keep the, the slides themselves fairly straightforward, but there's a lot more information in the notes, which are in all those documents, which I passed out. So, just to start with, there were certain priorities that guided our decision-making process as we developed the budget and as we identified the, uh, the steps to reduce the budget to get, oh, we got the last one, to get closer to where we needed to be. So, those budget priorities were maintaining manageable class sizes, maintaining and improving discipline at all the schools, meeting our legal, special education needs, maintaining current programming, and maintaining the teacher evaluation system. So, those five criteria guided a lot of our decisions. And when we came to assess options for reductions, it was about looking at it through that perspective. it was about looking at it through that perspective. So we have gone down a long road developing this budget, and it started with this number up on the screen, which was our level service budget, which we developed with our, a leadership team and with the school committee. And these were, this was the amount of money required to maintain the services we're currently providing. We did make, we recognized the financial situation of the town, and we did bring forward to school committee a reduced budget of twenty-nine million four hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, a reduction of some one and a half million from our level service budget. And since then, in discussion with the town, the budget advisory committee, and of course, public hearing, we have subsequently arrived at a number of twenty-eight million eight hundred thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So that's around another six hundred and so m, thousand dollars less than the one that the school committee voted for. And that's about 1.5% increase on this year's budget. And I'll go into a little more detail on that, he, towards the end of the slides. So, this is a slide, well, this is a slide you've actually seen before, but I just wanted to quickly re, to review how we come to be in this position, and why our, our level budget was so high in the first place. So, the most significant increase in the budget is driven through contractual salary increases. The teacher contract includes a 3% cost of living increase over and above steps and column changes. This was appro, this was agreed through contractual negotiations with the unit, the teacher, the teacher organization, and I think that reflected a desire to improve recruitment and retention in the district. When we surveyed surrounding districts, Wareham was well below the average rates for teachers, and I think this, the 3% increase has definitely improved that, although we're still somewhat behind those. Some of those districts were definitely catching up, but it does put a pressure on our budget. Out-of-district tuition is also contin, continuing to increase. We did have a kind of leveling off over the last couple of years, we're seeing an increase again, both in, partly in the, the cost of placements, but also in the number of placements as more students require services outside of the district. Linked, partly linked to that, transportation costs have also continued to rise, and that's reflected in this budget. We've also seen, we also have a, our circuit breaker fund, which is money we receive from the state. We've been able to draw on that to offset some of our district costs, but we've, we've almost entirely drawn off that. So there is no, that money is no longer there to offset our needs, and so the, 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 the operating budget, our LEA budget, has to pick up that additional cost. We are looking to increase the amount of money we pay to substitutes, because we're unable to attract substitutes at the current daily rate, and then everything else is about seventy-eight thousand dollars. So that's a breakdown of how we get, we, how we got to that original, eh, level service budget. And I'm now just gonna recap the steps we're taking to reduce the budget to get us down to the number we're presenting. So the first round of reductions was, the process really for this was we asked our administrators, our principals and directors to identify positions or savings which could be made without serious structural or programmatic changes. I mean, I think this partly reduced, this partly reflects student numbers changes, and so we are able to make some changes without hugely impacting class sizes. I think all reductions have an impact of some, but this, it was thought that these could be implemented without significant impact on those class sizes. And there is a bit more information on how that breaks down by school and so on in the notes. As we've discussed as well, we are looking at restructuring our leadership, and we currently rely heavily on assistant principals at the elementary and middle schools to assist in curriculum implementation, school discipline, and special education. The proposed change is to replace those assistant principals with a couple more deans, and also district-wide curriculum supervisors. And so while there isn't a huge reduction in the number of FDE, because we're replacing assistant principals with deans, that overall helps to bring down the overall, helps to reduce the overall cost by two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, and that's 11% of the total reductions. So then, obviously, the big ticket item is the proposal to close Minnet Forest Elementary School. So, as you all know, we have a project underway at the moment to replace both Decces and Minnet through a new building, which would be built ideally at the Minnet Forest site. So this proposal is really about trying to capture some of the savings that come from that project ahead of time, with some temporary measures, closing down Minnet Forest Elementary School and moving the students, and temporary measures which would allow us to capture some of the savings that come from having just one building. This will, so the changes would be moving grade three to Decces Elementary School, move, moving grade four to the middle school, moving preschool also, that, the plan for preschool is also for that to move to the middle school now, and grade eight would go to the high school. This will require portables to be in place at Decces. However, that will be paid through the town's capital budget, and so will not impact our operating budget. So the total saving from closing Minnet Forest Elementary School is homeless entirely in staffing. There is some small staff, non-staffing costs that have almost fifty thousand dol, savings, sorry, of almost fifty thousand dollars. But that's net, because there are costs related to doing the move as well. And so this, so in few, in subsequent years, the saving will be greater, once we've handled those moving costs. But the non-staffing saving this year would be fifty thousand, and then the rest, over a million dollars would come from reductions in staffing. And again, there's a lot more detail in the notes of exactly how that would be implemented. So the, the impact, just the projected enrollment, based, if, if we were to go ahead with closing Minnet, is ref, is put in here, so lower elementary school, which would be currently Decces, would be seven-hundred-and-eighty-three. Upper elementary and the middle school as is, would be seven-hundred-and-forty-four, and there'd be six-hundred-and-forty students at the high school. Now, this chart shows the financial impact of closing Minnet Forest Elementary School by major account. So you can see that while classroom specialist, classroom teachers really bears the brunt of the reductions, there are reductions in a number of areas, including administration, instructional leadership, and so on. And I think it's also worth adding that closing of Minnet Forest Elementary School will help to deliver savings to the construction of the new building, should it go ahead. With no shift, so if Minnet Forest has been closed, and with no students on the site, and the ability to use the existing building footprint, we believe it would save up to 1.8 million dollars from the construction of a new school. And that's primarily due to the ability to speed up the project, and avoids the escalation costs in the construction industry, where they're looking at each year, you add on about 6% of your costs. So if we're able to speed this up by up to four months, it would save up to 1.8 million. So we are also looking at changes to make savings in our transportation budget. The first step of this would be to introduce a, a registration requirement and a fee requirement. That would, having a fee requirement would obviously bring in some revenue, but I think even more importantly, we would be able to have every student who intends to ride the bus register. At the moment, because we don't know exactly who is and who's not gonna ride the bus, we develop routes based on everybody riding the bus, which means that all the routes aren't, I mean, we may make some judgments about this number of students on a bus, but it means the routes are not as efficient as they may otherwise be. So if we were able to introduce a fee, we would be able to reduce the number of routes, and that would, eh, free up some drivers who would be able to then be used for out-of-district special education transportation, which would, eh, reduce our reliance on out-of-district contracted services, and that would also deliver savings. So the total saving of both introducing a fee, reducing the number of routes, and bringing some of those out-of-district routes in, in, internally, would be about a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. And we are looking at a couple of other options to help reduce transportation costs. One is, we have issued an invitation to bid for third-party vendors to provide our in-district regular transportation costs, transportation services. And we are also looking at purchase of smaller 7D, more 7D vehicles to provide out-of-district runs rather than using the special education buses where possible. So that's the summary of the reductions we have proposed. It was the first round of staffing reductions, leadership restructuring, the transportation savings, and the closing of Minnet. And that would deliver our, eh, budget, or the net budget of just under twenty-seven million, a non-net of 1.8, and a total of twenty-eight point eight million. So, before I go on, however, I just wanted to talk a little bit about what our options are if Minnet Forest does not close. So, if we were not to close Minnet Forest, then we would be looking at some alternative options. And those are further reductions in teaching positions, reductions in programming, which would also have staffing impact, and also reduction in transportation. So I'm just gonna, sorry, I'm just gonna run through options around these. Now, these actually add up to more than we would need to save, and we would need to decide how best to blend these options to deliver the savings, because there is a judgment call in which of these services we cut or do not cut. So we could, eh, we have preliminarily, preliminarily identified up to fifteen additional FDE positions which we've cut, which would result in savings of some seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, based on an, an average, eh, salary of fifty thousand. That would require reductions of all grades and increasing height, increasing class sizes throughout the district. And those numbers, eh, revised class sizes for one through seven are in your notes. We would also consider moving kindergarten to half-day only. So at the moment, we run full-day kindergarten sessions, but instead, we would look at a morning session and an afternoon session, thereby reducing the number of staff that were required. We are, the athletic, the current athletics program budget is two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two, which is supplemented by student fees. Cutting back on the athletic programs offered could save the district, depending on how far we went, could save up to two-hundred-and-twenty thousand then. We could also look again at transportation services. So the legal minimum transportation the school district must provide is for grades, grades K through six over two miles. Currently, we provide transportation to all students living over a mile from their school. So if we were no longer to provide it, transportation's to grades seven through twelve, or to grades K through six in that one to two miles range, then that would allow us to significantly reduce the number of runs, let's say, deliver savings up to two-hundred thousand dollars. And so here's, so this is the summary then, if we were not to close Minnet Forest. So I have put in "up to" in front of these numbers to indicate that we would not need to deliver all of those savings, but clearly, no one on their own, no single item would be sufficient, so we would need to look at cutting any and all of these. That's all, so I do have supplementary information in that budget, in the slide pack you have. So there's further information on, by each major count, just giving you a detail of the trends that are implement, influencing the increases there, and also more information on the impact of reconfiguring the district with the closure of Minnet Forest. But, do you have any questions at this time?
I, I do have a, a few questions. First, first of all, my first question is, eh, I, you know, it's great that we'll be saving money if, if we move from the site, but what if we, it doesn't pass? So that's a concern of mine.
So if the, this, I mean, the problem is that Minnet Forest needs, will need significant work, whether this project passes or not. So, if it doesn't pass, then we would need to look at alternative options to housing those students.
Okay, and then I did have, um, some people asked me, and I know I've already asked you this, and, but some people have asked me, again, eh, exactly what is the cost of moving?
So at the moment, we've budgeted fifty thousand dollars for moving costs.
And that would include making sure that all the accommodations are appropriate for the preschool at middle school?
Yep.
And that brings, that brings me to my next question, what would happen with NIAC?
NIAC for the preschool program? I imagine we'd need to be certified.
I would have to change the site.
Yeah.
Location is not a problem.
You think they would approve classroom size, and that there's no playground there?
We already have playground space in mind, and what we would have to do to provide some structures there. We have talked about that.
Okay. Another question I have is, does this current proposed budget include the substitute increase?
Yes.
All right, so in my own opinion, that, eh, when we're in such dire straits, does it make sense to do that?
So I think the problem we're, the problem we're at now with substitutes is that we're not able to recruit enough staff, and that will impact the education, and eventually, the safety of students if they're, we aren't able to get enough substitute cover. We're not quite at that point yet, but I'd hate to get there.
And then, eh, about the plan, eh, the Plan B there, and you said about putting kindergarten to half-days, but don't we currently get, um, chapter, I think it's chapter seventy-four money, because they're, um, full-day?
So chapter seventy, we do get chapter seventy based on enrollment. However, enrollment is, chapter seventy is held harmless, so reductions in enrollment don't impact on your chapter seventy.
I thought it was because we went to full day that we got the money, not, and if you go to half-day, I didn't think you got it.
Well, because our enrollment has fallen such, we've never, our, the number of students we have have never gone up sufficiently to go above how much we get, because we're held harmless. So, basically, what the state does is it looks at how many students you have, and it works out its formula based on what kind of students they are, what services they're receiving, and so on. And that identifies, that determines your chapter seventy allowance, how much money you're gonna get. And then they compare that to what you got the previous year, plus a per-student minimum increase. And you get the largest of the two numbers. And because our enrollment has been going down for so long, the number you get based on the number of students you have has always been lower than the number you get based on the per-student minimum increase. So essentially, the number of students we have doesn't determine the, eh, chapter seventy we get at the moment, because we have a falling enrollment.
Okay.
And the other thing, the kindergarten grant, at one time, we were, received a grant if it was a full-day program. That grant went away two years ago, and so now we are receiving no incentive from the state to maintain the full-day program. But I will say, educationally, this is, this is going backwards. It's something that we are opposed to.
Oh, I, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree, I wouldn't want to see half-day kindergarten. Um, just a couple more questions, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's where you're at.
So another question I had was the middle school principal salary in the first proposed budget.
Yes.
So then that.
Is it, oh, no, sorry, is it, is that the question, so?
Was it, yeah.
So, the closure of Minnet includes reducing one principal position?
Right, so what I'm asking is the previous, um, budget that you presented to us, did it include the middle school principal's salary?
The, the budget, sorry, the budget that takes into account closing Minnet? Do you mean the, so the one, so?
The one, the one, eh, what was it, twenty-nine?
So when you voted for it, that included, yes, that included a principal, because we needed four principals at that time. So yes, absolutely.
So that brings me to another question about the middle school. So what's gonna happen to the IB program that was, eh, we were a candidate for with the middle school?
I believe the plan is for the process to continue.
Okay.
Yes.
And, um, then I guess my la, my last question, um, is, eh, so I, I am a little confused about, so we're gonna have these deans, so why is it necessary to have the coordinators too?
So I can, so I will give you my view, but it's partly because of, primarily, there's two things, curriculum development and evaluations.
So deans can't do that?
No.
They, yeah.
They, they do not.
Don't they evaluate the high school level?
No.
No.
No?
Because they're in uni. Because they're in uni.
Okay. All right, I guess that's it for now.
Thank you, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Um, I don't, I don't think I have any questions.
Comments?
Um, I just wanna say thank you to Michael for the extraordinary amount of work that has gone into this. Um, I guess I'm only speaking for myself when I say, no one wants to close Minutet. I say no one, I, no one wants that to happen. Um, but we just found ourselves faced with this large gap. And, and now we see what the options are, and now maybe, you know, people will understand why this plan was put into place. Um, I guess that's all I really have to say.
I also wanna say thank you to Michael and to the Budget Committee, Jeff Swett and Joyce Bakayaki. I know you've put in hours and hours and hours, and you were working up, again, up till the last minute. And, um, it's really appreciating, it's a, it's a daunting procedure and aspect trying to figure out, how to figure out how to do with so much less money. Um, at this time, it would be time to take a vote. Oh, Jeff, I'm sorry.
All right, that's right. So Plan B, if you will, although it feels more like Plan M, but Plan B, in essence, would require us to lay off considerably more staff and raise class sizes.
Yes.
Eliminate the advantage that our students have of, of full-day kindergarten that other communities have. Eliminate all or most of our athletics program, which would make us, I think Mr. Palladino would say, would make us that much less competitive in terms of attracting students, especially to the high school and now the middle school. And make it that much more difficult for parents and students to get to school. Is that a fair summary?
Yes.
And in addition to that, it's, it's, could save us up to a one-point-eight million dollars in the building of the new school, which we certainly hope will happen.
Yes.
And that number could, could go up the longer the process takes to get approval of the new school.
Absolutely.
I, eh, with the chair's permission, I'd like to respond to the thoughtful remark made at the, eh, public participation.
Yes.
It is very true, it is very true that the school committee's responsibility is to give the town a number. And in many communities, that's exactly what happens. You give the town a number, and they accept the number, and then they build a budget around that number. I have never, in twelve years, had that happen. Not even close. There's two reasons for that. One is, when it gets to town meeting, town meeting does not get to vote on revenue. They trust the town administrator specifically that the revenue that they say, that he says is available, is what's available. And the second reason is uncontrollable expenses, fixed costs, whatever you wanna call them. Town meeting also doesn't get to vote on. They don't get to vote on how much we spend on health insurance, as an example, as a major example. So the result of us taking the original number of thirty-some million, eh, to town meeting would be either a grossly unbalanced budget, or town meeting basically saying everybody competing to see who gets what, and the departments of the town, starting with police, municipal maintenance, et cetera, would all be competing for dollars on town meeting floor. Nevertheless, I can tell you, and I think I can speak for the, for the Budget Subcommittee, and I'm sure, I'm sure Joyce will correct me if I'm wrong. We decided this year, after many years of cuts, to say, there's a, there's a point at which we will not cut. And we came in approximately four-hundred thousand above what the original, what the town administrator published to the Board of Selectmen. I am happy to say that even though we were prepared to go to town meeting with that difference, somehow the town administrator found the four-hundred thousand, and we were, we're really happy that that took place. But we were prepared to fight on town meeting for, floor for that four-hundred thousand. So I really do appreciate your comment that we should be fighting for students. But I honestly believe we are. And, um, and I guess I just needed to, to say that as a prelude to, to town meeting. I guess that's it. Thank you for your indulgence.
It's okay. Yes, please.
Um, I would just like to share my thanks with, for Michael, the Budget Subcommittee, and the other members for their questions, um, working with us through this process. While we're not arrived at the final number and the decisions have not been made, it certainly has been a very drawn-out and long-budget season, and I know that we're not finished. But I also would like to share that we have very hard-working staff. Our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our custodians, our cafeteria, our bus drivers. Everybody comes to their job, ready to do their very best for teachers. And when they're in some conditions that are difficult, they pull together. We visited the elementary schools and had conversations with the elementary folks about what the options are. We are not happy at all with the fact that we have to consider closing a building earlier than what we would like to. But our children deserve the very best education possible that we can deliver. And while people may choose to offer suggestions that we're doing things, they would like to see things done differently. Our goal every day is to come and do the very best job for our kids, because that truly is what they deserve. Our kids come to us with some very high-needs difficulties. Some of the horrors that our children have experienced, no child should ever have to experience. And the teams that we've put together to work with our children do a wonderful job. Are we perfect? No. If we could add more support, we certainly would. But the plan to close Minutet provides that continual support, the wraparound services for our kids. When you look at some of the numbers, and, and I know that people have compared the high school to other high schools, but what they may not understand is twenty-five percent of our students at the high school are special-needs students. And when we're providing services for our students at the high school, when you look at other areas, they may be fifteen percent, they may be twelve percent, and some of the area schools are like that. And so, yes, our costs are higher. But I will tell you that every day, every time we sit and look at information, we're always looking at what can we do for our students as they deserve the very best. So thank you, um, again, this is not a place that we would like to be. We would like to be able to say we have X amount of money that we can spend on our students, and we're very happy with what we can provide.
Thank you. That's a good explanation, too.
I just have, um, Mary asked the question, and a lot of people have asked the question, what if we close Minutet and the new school doesn't pass? Well, what if it does? And, you know, that's gonna be our job, is to educate people so that that happens. 'Cause that question has come up a lot.
It's also, when it does happen, the students have to be relocated while it's being built. The same kind of relocation that we're looking at right now, no different. So at this time, um, I'd like to put it out there for a different kind of vote and see what you think. If I get a motion, if we get a motion, these motions. Um, because there was an alternate plan presented tonight, and because, you know, it took a while to develop, we're just looking at that plan, you know, the rest of us. We wanna give careful consideration to, to everything that's put before us in a budget document. So I'd like to have the vote in, on the budget in two weeks about which plan we would go to, of how we would spend the money, the resources that we've been allocated. But the second part is that the amount that we've been allocated is not going to change. That is the amount, the amount of net and non-net. And the Finance Commission wanted our, us to vote on the numbers as we were scheduled to vote on this evening. And, um, I, I am going to be looking for a motion to go ahead and do that, to vote on the net and non-net amount and total this evening. But not to vote on, um, how it's allocated till the next meeting. So, um, as I often do, procedurally, I turn to Jeff Swett and say, um, is it two motions, or, um, can you make that all one motion at a time? Can you make a motion on both and then do the votes?
Well, there's, there's three motions, net, non-net, and total. But what you're really saying is that we are, the vote in this case will not fix the major accounts.
No.
Normally, the vote would fix the major accounts. But as long as there is an understanding, and I think it should be included in the motion, um, that the, that the major accounts will not be fixed until the method of achieving that number is determined by this committee, I think it's, it's, it's fine, as long as that's part of the motion. Michael's nodding his head, so I think he understands what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm turning this way too, to see-
I think it's a good idea.
To see, you know, if that sounds like an idea.
Michael hasn't shown any major account totals.
No. I mean, there are some inform, there is some information in that you're notice, but we've not reviewed anything here.
But we are not voting on the major accounts tonight.
No.
Okay.
Even though, at some point, we will.
Mm-hmm.
And that's important.
Very important. So we're doing something differently this evening.
I, I, I have to say, I'm not really a hundred percent comfortable with it, because I feel like we're doing it just so they can get that number. I'm, all the work that's gone into this, I'm sorry, I'm just not a hundred percent comfortable with it. I'm not.
Well, that's why we're talking. Tell me, you know, you don't-
I just feel like we should, it shouldn't be separated.
Um-
Go ahead.
I, I agree with my colleague. My preference would be to fix the major accounts at the same time as we fix the, the grand total. I, I think if this is primarily for the FinCom's printed, eh, material, as long as they understand that there is a consensus that the number is the number, that's really all they need.
You mean, trust us?
Well, I mean-
No, I know what you're saying.
We are the school committee, we have, we're a legal, separate legal body, and we can do whatever we think is in the best interests of the, of the, of the town. And so I'm, I am very sympathetic to what my colleague is saying.
Mm-hmm. I'm sympathetic to anything. I'm just putting out what's going on and trying to see where it all falls this evening, obviously. Because we all have our own opinions, and we need to express what's going on so that we understand every, you know, so that we all understand, we all bring a piece.
Mm-hmm.
So you're helping me understand.
Okay.
What kind of motion are we going to make now? Make a motion to table it? From what I'm hearing here, do I have to take a motion to table something, or can it just be tabled? Till the next time?
You can make a, I'll make a motion to table it until, till the next meeting.
A second.
All those in favor?
Table it means table the vote of the budget.
The entire budget vote?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Just to be clear-
And if you table it, you table it to a specific date, and, and that date is the next school committee meeting.
I would just, can I just add one thing, which is what I suspect the FinCom may do is go with the last budget that the school committee voted on, because that's the only one they have.
That's their prerogative.
Yes, which we will, can, can be changed after the printers have done their jobs, but, yeah.
Yes. I know, I think that's fine.
Yeah, maybe a miracle will happen.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so my, I have the motion is table the budget vote to the next school committee meeting.
Mm-hmm.
In a second, but I don't have a, did you vote?
There was a second.
Yeah, I have a second.
Yeah, and we voted.
Yeah, we haven't voted.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five-zero-zero? Next, the monthly report, expenditure report.
So, eh, and due to inclement weather, we kind of have two monthly reports, eh, backed up. So there, you've received, you've got both the January and the February one. So I must apologize, the February report was circulated just today, so I can only apologize. I mean, in summary, we are still a little behind where we were at this time last year in terms of the remaining budget. Eh, that is primarily due to both our district expenditure and a transportation expenditure, two areas we have been watching closely since the start of the year. Transportation, in particular, does not have sufficient funds to, through, see through to the end of the year, as is obvious from the amount of money left there. We have earmarked funds within the Circuit Breaker Fund, which would be used not directly, but would help to offset transportation costs and meet our needs for the rest of the year. So what we're doing at the moment is reviewing all outstanding purchase orders, 'cause as you can see, you're looking at, our district tuition and transportation is well over, I think well over a million dollars, and, well, well over a million dollars in purchase orders. So we're just going through all of those to see exactly where we are, make sure there's none that can be reduced or no need to be added, so we have a good idea of exactly where we are before we make, make those transfers. So that's, that's, that's definitely the big-ticket story. There's a couple of transfers requested tonight, from a maintenance of grounds to maintenance of building and maintenance of equipment. There's a couple of other areas where we have been, eh, just responding to needs throughout the district as the year has gone through, and do not have sufficient funds left in those areas. Those are the key items. Are there any specific questions?
Are there any questions on that transfer?
Or the report at all?
You just said things came up. It wasn't anything specific. It wasn't some-
In terms of maintenance of building? No, it's just ongoing. Ma, maintenance of the building, DCS and the middle school, less so at Minutet and the high school. There have been a cut, a number of insurance claims, but that does not reflect on the budget.
And snow removal, too, is that correct?
And some snow removal. Well, it's not been so bad this year. It's been more about ice and storm damage. Again, that's insurance.
And when insurance claims are paid, does it come back in?
So actually, the insurance doesn't touch this, so that's all outside of this. We have separate funds for that, unless we pay for it and then are reimbursed. But normally, it's done in separate accounts.
Go ahead.
I think we've touched on this before, but the line item, short-term substitutes.
Yes.
Obviously remarkably positive.
Yes.
That, though, that difference of almost a hundred thousand dollars, um, doesn't include the cost of using regular teachers when substitutes are not available. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do we, do you have any idea what that number might be, ballpark?
I did. I can, I will get it again. I don't wanna give a number. I can find out exactly what it is.
Because when we were talking about substitutes earlier in the evening, that is obviously a significant impact, both financially and also on education, when you're pulling a regular teacher to cover someone else's classroom, in essence. Eh, so I shouldn't be too thrilled with that hundred thousand dollars as the bottom line.
So there are, there are a couple of reasons. One is just in a, not able to get substitutes. And the other is, we do have fewer, eh, short to long-term substitu, eh, absences, which is helpful.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I almost, just a quick-
Go ahead.
I almost, from an accounting perspective, it almost seems like the cost of that regular teacher to cover almost should be included in that line item.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, it's a, it's a distortion. So-
Yeah, I think that's, I think that I agree with that.
So just, well, let the record show that our chief financial officer agreed with me on this.
Yeah.
So if that's, if that's possible, that would be lovely.
Yes.
Thank you.
It'd be possible.
So we vote to transfer the boxes?
Well-
No.
We haven't gotten to that point yet, but yes. Well, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but yes.
So, unless there's any questions, we're just ask for approval of the two transfers.
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Acceptance of gifts?
Yes.
Madam Superintendent, you're on next.
Thank you. I would recommend the following gifts be accepted. $1,000 from Cape Cod Five to the high school to support Credit for Life. I'd ask for approval.
Oh. Approval? So, she to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you want me to do them all together?
That'd be good.
Okay. That's why I wasn't kind of ready for that.
Okay, all right. Move it this along. Mini grant awards by the Wareham Middle and High School PTA to support the financial expanding academic learning outside the confines of the classroom. $750 to the Top 10% Dinner. $173.77 to purchase items for the Life Skill Young Adult Program. $250 to start the Jitsu Program after school. $250 for printing costs associated with Viking Times. $50 to purchase items for the Summer Sale class of fishing. $1,760 to the Fine Arts Department from Louise Martling for a camera, for cameras, art supplies, Baby Grand Digital Piano. Monetary gifts of $140, gift cards valuing $634.75 and other merchandise totaling $402 from sponsors of the Science Fair. Your Cause Corporate Employee Giving at the AT&amp;T, donation of $2 to the high school and $292.32 from our chairman to the Global Education Fund. I would ask for approval of all the generous gifts.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
Okay, we are going to lump these together as well. I will be asking for approval of bills and warrants. Payroll ending February 24th in the amount of $102,047.17.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, this is all stipulated in the superintendent's report, correct?
Yes.
With the, my colleague's approval, we could waive the reading of the numbers and simply say as stipulated in the.
In the report.
In the report.
Okay. Thank you very much. And if anyone in, would like to see this, it would be printed online.
And next, we have the school committee report.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
You still have to move.
Oh, you move, right.
I move approval of the warrant as printed in the superintendent's report.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Next.
Pause your review. So, we have three policies to go over tonight. The first one is the Advanced Studies Program. There was no change to that. Do you want to vote on them individually?
Procedurally, we should be voting on them individually, yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Maybe, and Michael's still here. Michael, do you remember, have we ever included PCC and the ASLP program in the budget? Because what this basically says is that we can put money in the budget to support PCC and ASLP. And I'm, for the life of me, I can't remember ever having any money to put into those programs. Is that a fair statement? Years ago.
Pretty sure I asked that question before Michael was here. And, yeah, it was never any money.
So, even though it says we can, we never have.
Correct.
So, we don't have to worry about how that money is distributed. And I guess we don't really have to get into that for the policy. It just, this is really a budget, a budgetary issue more than it is of how it's going to be distributed. So, thank you.
It says may provide.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you. Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next.
So, the second policy is the hiring policy. There was some language added in paragraph two reflecting the new law. Do you want to talk about what's missing?
Sure. What we would ask the committee to also add in would be marital status because that is part of the town's policy, it's part of the law, and it was not added in. So, if you would be willing to add marital status in and accept the policy with that added in, then we can move forward. If not, this will need to go back to the policy committee for that consideration.
So, this is a, this is a matter of a legal matter, that this, this is supposed to be part of what's in?
It's supposed to have marital status in.
So, yeah, I've been looking at these kind of things forever and I've never heard of marital status being a point of discrimination. But to be clear, MGL does not require it, but the town does?
It will match the town's policy.
Thank you. I, I'll move, we amend, the policy is stipulated to include marital status.
Thank you.
A second?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
And the last policy is the textbook selection and adoption. And the only different, the only change to this is in the second paragraph, the word Assistant Superintendent replaced Director, Director of Curriculum.
Do I have a motion?
So, so just to be clear, and for those of you here or listening, this policy basically has, gives the school committee no role in the textbook process. Is that a fair statement, Madam Superintendent?
Yes.
And that's by law?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Move approval.
Do I have a second? Second.
You can't say, oh.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Okay, that's the end of that. For any other business, does anyone have any? Because I have a little bit. Would anyone else like to go first? Does anyone have any? I meant to mention when I was talking off the top of my head at the beginning of the evening, I didn't even mention that I've enjoyed working with the school committee. And as I look around the table, I can say I have not agreed with any of you 100%. It's never been a rubber stamp. But I certainly have had many ways in which, and many platforms where I've agreed with all of you very strongly. And the only one that, that, that I've had to agree with 100% is Mrs. Ruiz because she's always right. Tells us what to do. So, I've enjoyed, yeah, working with all of you. I appreciate everything and I'll miss you, but I'll watch you. So, that's it. But I just wanted to say one other thing, though. Because, you know, I'm, I'm not a politician, I'm an educator. But this is my last meeting and I have to address a couple of issues that I may, might not have ever addressed before because I was trained to stay above the fray. When something's going on, don't get into it, don't give it credence. And I've always tried to be true to myself and put the needs of the kids first. So, that's why I didn't comment before tonight. But I'm leaving and I just have to set a couple of things straight. Because these, these, what I have to correct was going on in social media and by people who used to sit with us or have sat up here before us. The first one is the superintendent's contract. That was renewed at the right time according to the contract. And when it came into question, I stopped. I spoke to an attorney, I got, got the attorney's letter and then passed it out to the school committee and we did exactly, exactly what was supposed to be legal. So, there's no subterfuge, subterfuge in there and no impropriety involved. And I felt like a letter keeps going on and on, a blog that is very insulting to me personally and to other people who are involved in the school committee. The other area, the school committee was accused of blindly supporting initiatives and abdicating responsibility while making budget reductions. Come on, people. Have you seen all the work that's gone into this? Have you seen all the deliberations? Have you seen all the repercussions? It is not easy. We've been trying to look at everything and we continue to look and we're taking another couple of weeks to deliberate and see if anything else can be done. But that's just demeaning to everyone who's up here and an insult to everyone who volunteers on this committee. We've also been called out on social media for not commenting on threads about school issues with both children and employees. This isn't what a school committee does. There are privacy issues here going on. It's illegal for us to say anything. So, people who should know better have commented on there. Now, we all have freedom of speech, say whatever you want. But, you know, I think we've all had civics classes or history classes. With freedom of speech, what comes with it? Responsibility. So, you take the responsibility, you may reap the, the consequences, too. And that's what I was taught. So, I, I just find it really perplexing that school issues are being played out on social media. I use social media all the time. But there are, people are being asked questions on social media who aren't on the school committee, who don't have, who don't even have the answers. And the answers they give become the answers. I, when I was running for school committee three years ago, I handed out a couple of hundred cards with my home phone number, with my personal email. I asked people to write to me. I never heard anything. People could have called me. As long as I've been on the school committee until a couple of months ago, I could count on one hand how many people emailed me on the school committee account. And then the last few weeks, maybe it got to the other hand. Other than that, you know, I don't hear from people. And, you know, that, that's a venue. I mean, people who comment on social media are using one name, their first name. They're hiding behind anonymity. People don't even live in Wareham and they're, and they're tearing us down. I tell you, I have not heard about school issues. I told you, there's many maybe. But what I have heard, I have heard people being appalled with what's been said about our school on social media. And it's gone on and on and on. And that's really dragging our school down. To have misinformation out there and you don't even know who's commenting or making comments like that about our school. So, I think it's a problem with our schools. So, what's the solution? I think a solution would begin with, you know, if you're there on your computer, it's just as easy to click on a link to write to the people on the school committee. You could come to school committee meetings. And I really understand if you can't come, if you have children, if you can't get here. But it's being streamed live. I've watched them a couple of times. I haven't been here. If I've been away or traveled remotely, so, I mean, there's, there's a way of finding out. Keep informed. Don't just read. Wareham Week does a great job. The newspapers do a great job. Don't get me wrong, but it's still succinct. They're, they're cutting down the information they're giving you. Listen to the school committee meeting, become informed, and then you can make better decisions. You have better questions. And be part of the solution then. Be part of the solution by giving the information about how you feel to the issues, to the, to the people on the school committee who have the information to give you the correct answers. And I guess, I guess that's all I wanted to say to end. And again, I, I thank Wareham to have had the honor to have served you for the last three years. And may I have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Good night.